Mr. President.
Yeah, I have problems. As we know, I told Chelsea Smith. You don't want to talk about it next year.
Okay, we're gonna get the meeting going here in a minute. September fifteenth, but before we start, I don't see anything here. Travis Hensley is gonna come up, lead us in opening prayer.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, Lord, in the name of Jesus Christ, we're so thankful for bringing us all together today. God, we pray that you would come into our presence. We pray that you would lead our elected officials in a way that's best for the citizens of Marshall County. We pray that you would direct our paths. We pray that you would be glorified in all of our deeds, Lord. In these troublesome times, God, we pray that you would help us to come and unite together, Lord, and help us to put down political differences and help us to see you, that you would be glorified ultimately. We pray and ask all these things in your name, Jesus Christ.
Opening prayers, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our visitors this morning, thank you for coming. And now we have public input on agenda items with a slight change. I believe you had something you wanted to add.
Yeah, Mr. President, I moved to permit Mr. Dana Mir to speak. It's not an agenda item, but I don't want to make him wait for a whole two-hour meeting before he's able to address the council. I think he's got a request for us. Dana?
Come on up.
Yeah, please, come on up here. Come on up there and state your name and address and what's on your mind.
All right, Dana, here eight two one, North Lakes, we're driving Culver. And just requesting from the commissioners that we have twenty-minute, maybe from one o'clock to one-twenty ceremony in honor of Charlie Kirk next Sunday. His funeral will be two o'clock our time. I know many people want to go back home and watch that. It'll be pretty lengthy, but maybe a prayer vigil on courthouse lawn from one to one-twenty on Sunday, just to commemorate his life, pray for his family, his children, and just requesting that permission.
I'm assuming it's just strictly outside, correct?
Strictly outside.
Okay.
Yeah, so this wouldn't be an official county event or anything sponsored by the commissioners. We just permit the public to gather during that time. Yeah, and so I move to approve Mr. Mir's request.
I'll second that.
Motion made second to approve Mr. Mir's request to allow a public meeting on the courthouse lawn to honor Charlie Kirk next Sunday at one to one-twenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dana. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any public input on agenda items today? Seeing none, we'll move on. Jason, Highway Department?
Morning.
My good morning.
So we got permits. So this is the new process doing, so hopefully this goes.
Okay. First permit is South Shore Drive. It's Transation-Sycamore Road, Union Township. It's placing fiber optic cable in new existing dock to serve three homes on South Shore Drive. And this is, who is this? Toyota Group? Yes, yeah. Toyota Group. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion made second to approve the request from Toyota Group on South Shore Drive. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next one is nine A. Excuse me. Next one is, this is for BSN Group. It's nine A between Collins Drive and State Road. Is that thirty-one? Should be US thirty-one anyhow. Between thirty-one. Work taking place along and under nine A road as well as Collins Drive approximately twenty-five hundred thirty-eight feet within right-of-way. Excuse me. That's a directional board. Is there more than just one permit on that?
Uh, there'll be at least nine, ten, eleven I have.
Next one is ninth road between Richter and Suter Road, Center Township. Looks like it's directional board again. What is, next one is Suter Road between ninth road and nine A road. Directional board again. The next one is, is that the same one? Is this a different one?
It's a different one.
Okay, nine A, Richter and Suter Road. And that's also another directional board. And the next one is nine A road between Suter and US thirty-one, Center Township, another directional board. And this is Collins Drive slash Parkview Court, slash Parkview Drive between nine A and Parkview Place Court. Work is located along and under Collins Drive, Parkview Court, and Parkview Drive approximately twenty-four hundred seventeen foot within the right-of-way. And that's a directional board. Is that all of them?
No, we got more.
Okay. Nine A and Richter Road again, Center Township. Work is located along and under nine A, approximately fifteen hundred eleven feet, that's a directional board. And Parkview Drive between Collins Drive and Parkview Court. It's a directional board also. And old US Highway Thirty between Pioneer Road and Wingmill Drive, Center Township, directional board. And West Three-B Road between North Tamrac Road and North Sycamore Road, Pope Township. This is an asphalt cut for pot-holing to locate existing utilities. And Lilac Road between Bluebird Trail and Seven-B Road, Center Township. This is grass sliced dirt right-of-way.
And that's all of them from BSN.
That's all from them.
So I move that we approve the permit request by BSN Group as presented.
Right. Motion made second to approve the BSN request, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have an award here, Culver. That's on behalf of Comcast Cable. So here is, uh, what's CH? What is that, Jason? What is CH?
Oh, fiber optic cable.
Okay. And thirty, Highway Directional Board, so seventeen hundred nineteen feet west of Rose Road, West Township. New cable will be installed along and across Lincoln Highway right-of-way. Sound underground directional board. I think it's your one for that.
Okay, I move to approve Comcast's request for directional board as presented.
Second? Motion made second to approve the directional board for Comcast. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And who is Jesse Goodcar, what company is this? Question's made by Jesse Goodcar, you know who that is.
I think that's BS. Yeah, it's got BSN at the top of the paper.
Okay. That's for BSM also. That would be two A road. It is, work taking place on two A road approximately seventeen hundred thirty-five feet within the right-of-way. And that's a directional board also. And Michigan Road between Ridgeview Drive and Twelfth Road, Center Township. That is also a board, directional board, as in fiber optic cables. And Three-B, North Tamrac Road and Sycamore Road, Pope Township. Ask what will be cut on this for pot-holing to locate existing utilities.
We're taking that one out because that is a duplicate. You already approved that one.
Okay.
Because we had pulled out out of this stack.
Okay. Is that all that group?
So I move to approve the additional request by BSM Group as presented.
Second? Motion made second to approve the additional BSM Group request as presented. Minus the one that was a duplicate. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I wasn't holding.
That's where it gets too fast for me, Tori.
We're hoping, and just so to raise aware, we've changed it. So we weren't missing any of these and that we weren't doing duplicates. So we have asked Jason to help us do a little different, so thank you.
Yep, same to you.
It's always bad when you only have one duplicate. It's not bad. Bridge One, your trail update, that schoolwork has started. September twenty-ninth, work is to be completed, but also they said that another relocate crew was coming in. If all goes well, no set bias completion would be on ten-three. Just to note, the original dates they were giving the okay was on ten-twenty-eight to twenty-four, and they're looking at a completion date of seven-thirteen possibly. Hopefully, we know a little bit more by the next meeting, but just kind of give you a idea of what we're having there. Two-thirty-two, bridge has been reclosed and work has started to finish at the construction. Go down to the pavement, striping. The RFPs were received by Adam Conbrea. You invited consulting and RQAW. Once those are squared, we'll submit those for the highest rank. Sean will probably talk a little bit about the violitics. They did send an updated contract for that. Sean did give the okay based upon what they said to go ahead and proceed with it yet this year. And if everything goes well, then we're still looking at next year to go ahead and contract with them.
Okay.
I guess as long as Sean's okay with that. Because I'm not agreeing, I can go ahead and get that started.
So I move that we approve the agreement with violitics. With the president signing on behalf of the board.
Second? I assume you have the money there to pay for this, Jason?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made second to approve the contract for violitics, the updated contract. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Road program, last week we did seventh, further to three-thirty-one, and they should be finishing up whether presenting this week on nine B, three-thirty-one to County Line. Was mentioned at the last committee meeting and council meeting, additional funding to, for work on some of the subdivision roads due to late pavement, due to the late season paving. That would be hot mixed material. Subs that we were, would possibly be looking at would be Forest Hills, Oak Crest, Crest Lane, D-Drive, and Tall Oaks. I know that was brought up in the last council meeting, so probably a motion to go forward with those.
Yeah, I move that we approve additional paving projects to be done contingent on council funding to the Forest Hills, Oak Crest, Crest Lane, D-Drive, and Tall Oaks subdivisions.
Second? Motion made second to approve with the proposal pending council funding to do the possible extra paving in the subdivisions of Forest Hills, Oak Crest, Crest Lane, D-Drive, and Tall Oaks. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And just to note on that, this would be additional work that was not originally in the road plan that is, it's reflective of the commissioners and hopefully the council's commitment to continue to do more work than we normally would. So this is gonna be general fund money probably, right?
Yeah.
Yep, so thank you to the council for continuing to support additional work on the highway.
Community crossings, third road's been completed, sixteen C's completed, ninth road has been completed. Nutmeg has been paved, and we just have a little bit of work to do on the shoulders and have a go. Just to note, that did not include any seating. One of the biggest reasons I don't like the seat in front of a lot of residences, there's so many different type of grass seats, and if you put the wrong one, people don't like it. So. Additional paving projects, railroads have been completed, King Road's completed, Ninth and Suter pavement is completed, and same thing, we have some shoulders to finish up there, and killing work has been completed. That's all I got.
Can you touch briefly, because I got a couple calls, basically Seventh Road is not finished product, it's just the base, probably set for next year, so.
Yes.
Kind of tell people your plan, so.
Nope, spot on.
Okay, and basically that's, if you have soft spots or any pop-up because of deterioration of the road, we go back and fix it. That's before the top coat, so.
Seventh Road was definitely one that we would look at come next year for any type of improvements that would need to be done on that section.
So it's obviously significantly better than what it was before, but it's not perfect, and we're gonna go back and make sure.
We will, that was our first road we done with a brand-new paving crew. So literally, that's trial and error and learning as we went along. Just to give you an idea, from Seventh Road, then when you drive nine B, just to see the difference from what they learned from one to the end. So the crew that's on that, that's twenty-five-year investment, and if they stay. So feel very good about that.
Just the base is not gonna be as cosmetically pretty as the others. So in that thing, that's what people seeing, they don't understand what's coming, so. Get that on the public meeting.
So they did seventh, and then they went and did nine B right after that?
Yep.
It was a parallel section pretty much?
Yep.
Got it. Anybody got anything else for Jason?
Nope, thank you.
Seeing none, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Story with society, Sandy and Mike. By the way, Mike, I want to publicly thank you for the efforts you've been doing to help us around here with our insurance and some other things, trying to make sure we do that.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I know we give you a hard time at times, but thank you.
Richly deserved, no doubt. Good morning, I'm Sandy Garrison, I'm the Executive Director of the Marshall County Museum, and.
Mike Mullally, President, Marshall County Historical Society.
It's good to see you all this morning. And I feel like I said this to the council too, that every time I see you guys, I tell you how busy the museum is. And it's always true, but summer really brings an uptick in the programming we're doing. So I have a picture for you to start us off. Our brown bags, as you know, are held every month, well, twelve, ten out of the twelve months of the year, and really to a full house. And if you were here last week during the council presentation, a question came up about one of the brown bags. Jim asked if I knew the story of Culver's Black Widow. So we went back and checked, and it is indeed told in the presentation that we had in June. So if you were here, and/or if you're curious about that story, it is really pretty interesting. I did do a little reading about it and talked to the historian down there in Culver too. But you can check out the presentation he did for us back in June on our YouTube channel. Just a little fly plug there, you know. Additional events this summer included the Downtown Summer Kickoff, Mayor's Summer of Music, the Downtown Merchant Sidewalk Sale, the Tractor Show, and Arts in the Street, which due to storms became Arts in the Museum and everywhere else. We actually hosted a number of artists inside that day, and the event became a great exercise in community cooperation. And I have another photo for you. So this summer, we've also been about, out and about in the county proper, participating in activities that help us sort of the entire area, including One Marshall County and America Two-Fifty. If you haven't already, please like and follow the Marshall County's America Two-Fifty Facebook page. It does promote the events that the committee is doing, but it also has some great content every week, like this series on the Declaration of Independence signers, which is written by our very own Anita Kapetsky. And in addition to programming, we welcomed already almost five thousand patrons this year, and our research department completions are fifty percent higher right now than last year's year-end number. We're continuing to implement our long-range plan along with its annual planning calendar, which helps our staff focus on community-based initiatives. And another picture. Summer's also the time that we really dig in on exhibits. Our goal is to always keep things fresh so that people keep coming back. The main lobby is entirely reset once a year. Items formerly on display are rotated to our windows. We feel like this is a good use of time because exhibits are tremendously time-consuming to create, so recycling them allows us to reach a wider audience and also encourages pastors by, we hope, to come inside and explore. In addition to the work in our lobby and windows, we also redo one permanent exhibit every year. This year, that permanent exhibit is our dairy room, which is located upstairs in the Lauer Building. And this morning, and I mean, this morning, the story I want to tell you comes from the research for this project. And one thing we always do when we are doing an exhibit, part of the research is to look at the national picture too, what's going on and how, you know, that impacted the county. So the first part of what I'm gonna tell you a little bit about is the bigger picture, and then we'll zoom back into the county. So during the eighteen-fifties, close to eight thousand babies a year were dying in New York City from a mysterious illness. In eighteen-fifty-eight, journalist Frank Leslie published a series of articles exposing what he believed to be the source, tainted milk. It turned out that cows were being fed a recycled grain product from local distilleries. The smash was called swill. And unfortunately, it lacked nutrients, both for the cow and consequently for the milk that was produced. The milk was very watery and almost blue in color. So in order to improve this, vendors were found to be adding chalk, eggs, flour, and even plaster of Paris.
Wow.
Yeah, so the results of milk went not just from being non-nutritious to being downright toxic. And a thing that we learned in, you know, doing other research projects, specifically the fire exhibit, was that tragedies like this often are the catalyst for positive change. So things started to move. There was just growing awareness nationally and against, then locally, of the health risks tied to things such as this. And this led to increasing focus on milk hygiene. The development of refrigerated transportation began then in mid-eighteen hundreds and was a key factor in the process of positive change, allowing milk to travel with greater safety from rural areas like ours to consumers and population centers. Innovations such as pasteurization were also crucial for improving milk safety. While initially met with some resistance, pasteurization gradually became widespread. And it's really interesting to read the comments, you know, that are posted in the time about how people felt about it and just, you know, why people were resistant to things that, you know, we consider so common today. It's just actually really interesting to see what they were grappling with at the time. Increased demand for milk meant increasing need for mechanization of its production. So significant inventions towards this included the development of the automatic milking machine, commercial milk bottles, cream separators, and bottling machines. These developments facilitated protection, streamlining packaging and distribution, and improved sanitation. And I was kind of interested just in the milk bottle. You know, it seems like, why would that be a big deal? But it was actually a huge change and a huge step towards, you know, things becoming more hygienic. And you have to think back when people, you know, basically just came with any old container, straight from the farm with a ladle, and you put it in any old container, and then you had, you know, somewhat sketchy refrigeration. So you can see how things were changing and how the milk bottle really was quite an innovation at its time. So the reset of the dairy room will address all of this transformation. And we will detail, we're gonna use a timeline format, how the American dairy industry transitioned from production mainly for individual, family use, or local trade to an industrialized, regulated system designed to support food safety and mass consumption. We will show how Marshall County dairies evolved over time, incorporating and adapting to these changes. In addition, we will share the related story of ice harvesting from local lakes. That's actually really fascinating. We actually produced enough ice in Marshall County that we shipped ice other places. We shipped ice to Chicago, how they kept it over the summer. You know, it's something we share with kids all the time in school groups when they come in, but, you know, it's funny to think it was just really in the grainskin, things wasn't that long ago. And we will highlight county innovators such as the Schlosser brothers, we always laugh when we try to say that really fast, and today's homestead dairy. We usually unveil new exhibits during the first quarter, and hope that you'll be able to join us. We'll let you guys know when we are planning the Dairy Room's grand opening. So I thank you as always for your support of the museum and for your attention this morning, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mike, you got anything?
Well, just thank you for all your support. Stop in and see us. I'd love to have you come.
I believe you missed out on your presentation about the arsenic and how many husbands got poisoned.
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna let you guys read that one. I was like, I was shocked. I actually, I went back and they sent me some documentation and everything, and I was like, my goodness. So, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize that. There was a similar story, there was actually, but I think this gal, her husband was gun, was over in La Porte, but that was, it was more in the eighteen hundreds. And so at first, I thought that was what Jim was talking about. But I went back and she was like, no, she said, I think there's a more recent story too. She said, I'm pretty sure it was in the brown bag. And so I went back to Jeff and John. Because a lot of times I don't get a chance, I can like peek in and out, but I can't sit and stay for the whole thing. And they sent me all this information about it, and I was like, oh my gosh. So she was married, I think, twelve times, sometimes to the same person. But, you know, it was not too long ago, so her last husband was a professor at the academy, so.
Thank you. You got any questions?
No.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you guys. If anybody wants, I can send you the research file too via email. I thought about doing that, but I wasn't sure.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Health Department, Paul. Going forward, will you state your name and title for the record for what you set out?
Hello, Paul Schumaker, Marshall County Health Department. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be as interesting as that was.
You've not had a job for the Health Department, there you go. You've seen you've poisoned quite a few husbands away, according to the stories. What you got for us today, Paul?
I just came in to see if we could ratify the PHEP grant for emergency preparedness. It actually covers part of my wages for the year.
And how much down the amount, you know?
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand, okay. Any questions for Paul?
Are you guys gonna run this past the councils, right?
Well.
This has already been done. This is a multi-year agreement that was approved last year. This is just a ratification of the agreement as it comes through.
Well, I move to approve the grant request for public health. Emergency Preparedness Cooperative Agreement, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second? Motion made second to approve the Health Department's request for the PHEP grant ratification agreement. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Paul. Got anything else?
Yeah, one more. I have a, there's a on-site wastewater mega conference in Sandusky, Ohio, that I would like to take the opportunity to go to. It's October nineteenth through October twenty-second.
And you guys have, you got some of your budget out there to pay for that, correct?
Yes.
You got a traveler.
Yep.
Training. Okay.
Yeah, I move that we approve the off-site training.
Second? Motion made to approve the off-site training, out-of-state travel. Uh, this is you attending it, correct?
Yes.
For Paul to attend the, uh, training, October nineteenth to October twenty-second, you say Sandusky, Ohio?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Uh, Nicholas, Plan, Plan Commission.
Good morning, Jim.
Morning, Nicholas.
A long time ago, too.
Actually, I had a time.
I know.
Go ahead and tell us what you got.
Uh, okay, so first up, it looks like the twenty-five PC thirteen Benninghoff Catherine Bruce Brown Tiner. So this was a request for an alley vacation on the addition to Tiner subdivision from block fifteen to block eighteen, lot two. Located west of Walnut Street in Tiner, Indiana, Zone T one. So the Plan Commission recommended to you, to you guys favorably to vacate this. This is a basically unimproved alley. Overgrowth, grass, not so much drivable. Basically just, you know, planted out early on in Tiner and no improvements ever to it. So the neighborhood has been partially developed. The Benninghoffs have accumulated several lots to kind of combine those. Um, other adjacent property owners, he's favorable of this as well. So really no, no reason to keep it. So it was a reasonable request.
So we're basically bringing the, uh, the map in compliance with reality, basically.
For the most part, for the most, yeah. I mean, there's, you know, the houses that would access us have access on Walnut Street. And I don't know what the name of the other street is that's perpendicular. But everybody has access. Again, this is just, you know, overgrowth. Maintained a little bit by the Benninghoffs and by some of the property owners, but.
So why not? Is this gonna be split into the neighboring property owners now?
So this is all in the subdivision, so it will stay within the subdivision.
Okay.
So yes, um, actually the southwest side will not get any of this. It'll stay completely within the subdivision.
Yeah, I got to watch that hearing. It was, it was quite an interesting hearing.
Yeah, you know, it's just one of these odd little situations that come up because of, you know.
All right. Well, I move that we, uh, approve the request to, uh, for vacating the alley, right? That's the, the request?
That is the request.
Okay.
Oh, it's twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, correct?
Dash twenty-one.
No, twenty-four.
Twenty-one is the purpose sequestration.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-one.
Twenty-four.
Sean, do we have to have three readings on this?
Um, so not by state statute, but I remember, I think it's, that's what you've done in the past, is that, um, with the.
Okay.
We, yeah, we did with Mr. Hernandez who came up a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, then I move that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four um, on first reading.
Second, motion made second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four on first reading. Uh, to amend the zoning ordinance in Tiner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You want to suspend the rules?
I'll bring it back in two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, bring it back in two weeks, okay. Two weeks, Nicholas.
All right.
Proposal here too, though.
Yes, yes, we do. So this is ordinance number twenty-five, twenty twenty-five twenty-one. An ordinance amending, uh, common use of Marshall County's owning ordinance. This is for carbon sequestration and storage. This is one that, yes, we were requested by, uh, the Plan Commission to draft an ordinance on. So we did. Plan Commission has recommended favorably, uh, to the commissioners here to adopt this ordinance. Do I need to read the ordinance?
You wanna just give us the highlights?
Yeah. Highlights, uh, focus on the, I guess banning currently of transportation through the county through various means such as trucking, railroad, pipeline, um, to the extent that we have control. And also to the storage of carbon sequestration. So carbon dioxide gas is taken, removed from emissions from power plants, from manufacturing. It's compressed and the idea is to store it deep within the earth so it cannot go into the atmosphere. This is, you know, one mile to two miles underground. It's underneath our aquifers. It expands into natural, I guess, premises and caverns. What has been seen and happening in various spots around the world is that this is actually creating acidic conditions within aquifers. So us having a very large and very pure water source aquifer under our county and under our state. I'm not a fan of this, so in the best interest of protecting the health and the future of our county, its environment, and the people, we're proposing this ban. And so this also is, is becoming a more common practice around the globe. However, it is very dependent on the soil rock conditions of each site. So there's no consistent science. There's nothing that's actually showing this is, this is good, beneficial. It's just very open right now.
And if I remember right, about six weeks, eight weeks ago, the EPA has now said that CO2 is not a pollutant anymore. And so as far as I know, the, the whole rationale of why we were doing this has been.
Right. The trending science, um, is going towards, yes, the CO2 actually is creating much greener and healthier environment, which is therefore cleaning and taking care of the, the environment much better, in the atmosphere much better. That'll probably change, but. I mean, it does every six months, so.
Are you done?
Sure, yeah, I'll be done, yeah.
I want to cut you off. I went to a couple of presentations, uh, a year and a half, two years ago on this, cause I just had no idea what it was. It's scary stuff. This can expand underground in cabins, it's up like ten, twelve miles square. So there's no way you know if it's in your county or not. And it's such high pressure that when you run them pipes down that deep in the ground, there's always a chance for rupture.
Right.
And if it ruptures into your aquifer, then you got major problems.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is one of the reasons I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, and there was a big incident in twenty twenty in, uh, Sartaria, Mississippi.
Yeah.
And, I mean, seven people died from this, a pipeline ruptured. Basically suffocated it, was suffocating everyone within like a forty-five mile radius of the rupture. So, um, they had hundreds of hospitalizations. Thankfully, most of those people recovered and were, were fine, but seven people did die from this.
And I couldn't imagine anything scarier than taking a breath and there's no air there.
No air. Exactly.
All right, well, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine. The amendment of Zenn Ordinance two thousand seven dash ten, the banning of carbon sequestration.
First reading.
On first reading.
I'll second that.
Motion made second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. Banning of carbon sequestration on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right.
All right.
Hang on a second. I'm personally due to the second, third reading today. I'd like to be done with this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, suspend the rules and pass this on second, third reading. I just think it's that important. Get it done, get it behind us.
Second.
Motion made second to suspend the rules and pass this on second, third reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, Nicholas.
Thank you.
Get the zoning ordinance amended to include.
Sean, attorney report.
Yeah, the only thing I have is I put together a very simple MOU, uh, to be used between the county and various, uh, fire departments, city towns, uh, the money use these drones that, uh, we recently purchased and, um, have it answer any questions and just seeking approval. I don't know if, if, um, we'd submitted it just recently. Mike Miley submitted it off to the folks at Police McKnight for comments. We haven't heard no one back, but that was late last week, so. I don't know if, if you'd like to wait till your next meeting to see if we do get any comments, um, or we could, we could always amend it if there, there is anything. But this is just basically saying that, uh, you know, they're gonna take care of it and, uh, only authorize people that are trained. They're gonna use it and, you know, use it carefully, not trying not to, you know, keep damaging any, any property with it, things like that. But, um, I don't know if John or Mike, if you had any comments or suggestions on this.
Well, I, I think you did a nice job writing it, Sean, but I'm gonna, you know, ensure this guy.
I'm sorry, I'm up here, Mike.
Uh, sorry?
Come up here if you'd like to speak, please. Let me get you on TV.
Mike Miley, Marshall County Insurance Consultant, whether or not. No, I think you did a good job writing this, uh, and it spells out who's responsible under the insurance provisions and everything like that. And it details that all the pilots have to be properly trained and licensed for whatever the requirements are for a drone pilot. I, it looks good to me, but like I said, I, I just assumed we have the insurance carriers take a look at it too, so. Is there urgency to get it done tonight?
I don't necessarily think so, huh?
No.
But if it's, if you could, maybe we could wait till the next meeting.
Could we, could we make a motion to approve pending approval of the, uh, insurance companies?
Probably could.
Yeah, that's fair.
If something we don't like, we'll go back and amend it.
Okay, that's fine, sure.
All right.
I move.
Well, second, motion made in second to approve the, uh, the drone, uh, public safety grant. Given that we have an understanding, uh, pending approval from our insurance carrier, liability carrier, Police McKnight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have.
All right.
And you have updates you got for us, or is that it?
No, not much, real specific questions, no?
Okay, we're good. Madam Aldrich.
Okay, I have your September second minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from the September second meeting, not presented.
Second, motion made second to approve the September second meetings as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have been, I'm sorry, September second executive session?
Have motion.
Second.
And second, motion made second to approve the executive session, September second, uh, minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I have AP claims.
I move to approve the AP claims.
The second.
Motion made second to approve the AP claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the last thing I have is payroll.
I move to approve the payroll claims.
Second, motion made second to approve the payroll claims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Anything else, Madam Aldrich?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the job you guys do. Public comments. Anyone here have any public comments on anything on their mind? Seeing none, we're gonna move on. We'll come to commission items. We've got a couple of things here to deal with today. Court interpretative grant agreement. Uh, Sean, you, you agree with that?
Yeah, I, I'll take it with that, and everything seemed to be in order.
Anything you got, any, anything you want to add here?
Uh, this was Judge Aldridge. Uh, twain, I spoke with him last week. This reimburses us for what we're already utilizing. This was something that he had requested approval for seven months ago, and now this is just the ratification of the signa- of the signature of the agreement.
Is that one or three signatures?
It's just one.
Okay.
And does this reimburse us for anything that we've spent, uh, prior, or is this just for going forward?
This is going back to the beginning of the grant period, which I believe is July first, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Okay.
And this is something that, um, the judge will put together the claims to reimburse or to submit back to the state for this.
I move that we approve the grant agreement for the, uh, so bilingual stipend, right, basically, yeah.
Second that. Motion made in second to approve the court interpretative grant agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next one that we have is a signals business associate agreement. We kind of already have this in place. We didn't have to formally approve it. So any discussion or have a motion?
Motion to approve the signals business associate agreement as presented.
Is that one signature? That should be one signature, I do believe.
Yeah, one. With, with the president signing on behalf of the board.
Second. Motion made second to approve the signals business associate agreement with the president signing on behalf of the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The next one is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, establishing a court-appointed special advocates department. Sean, you want to give us an update on that?
Yeah, so we talked, we talked about this at the last meeting, uh, this would take the, uh, court-appointed special advocates. Um, Crepechner is ran as a not-for-profit, uh, has been employed by, uh, Chesley Keller, the executive director who recruits and manages, uh, the Casa volunteers. Um, that would transition her into, uh, being a, a department of the county. Uh, with the idea that this would, uh, defending of that, it's gonna get approved in the budget and, and other appropriations. And that would take effect at the beginning of next year.
And she's basically answer to the courts, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so everyone understands. Any discussion on that? Any questions?
Is this one of the new three readings on?
Well, there's no urgency on this one.
I'm saying, do we, do we need to?
Oh, yes, yeah, we will, but.
So just first we move laws and that. All right, then I move that we approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, establishing court-appointed special advocates department on first reading.
Second, motion made second to establish, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, establishing a court-appointed special advocates department, uh, known as Casa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you want to go ahead and suspend the rules or you want to wait?
I would not foresee anybody really probably pushing back against the, against us, however. Um, it's establishing a new department in my mind.
It's still, it's still pending council.
And, yeah, still pending funding. I, I, I'd like to push it through today like that, but it might be better to pause.
That, that's fine. Then we'll take that back up for a second next meeting. Uh, the next item is, um, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, establishing the purpose of the Epic Fund, forty-nine oh four. Uh, I'm gonna tell you the best I can. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago. We looked at this ordinance, went over it. Basically, this was established. Angie, correct me if I'm wrong here, if you remember differently, this was established back by the state in two thousand three or two thousand four. While Health Department cannot use the money, it's kind of overseen by the Health Departments in the state. This money can only be used for like, uh, established for like, uh, communications and, uh, internet throughout the state. And basically, it was established based on when you say interca- uh, communications, I think I need to be a little more, uh,
Specific.
This, yeah, it, it, it's for like towers and stuff to put them through the county, so. John, did I get anything wrong?
No, it's more for internet than, than communications.
Yeah, hmm, that type. So that's what this, uh, before that money could be spent. The auditor's office felt we needed to have an ordinance in place to, uh, establish how it could be spent. So we could justify what we did to State Board of Accounts, that they come in and question it. So any questions, discussion?
And the, the funds that, that go into this fund, um, are the, basically the, the rent and the, and then the, uh, the agreement that we just made to, uh, to give that long-term lease on the, on the space for the towers, right? Yep.
And it does generate, there are some leases out here, yeah, and some of the towers are generating a little bit of revenue that go into this fund, funds it. So to this day, it has pretty much taken care of itself. There's been no money put into it other than what is generated, so. And I believe this follows the guidelines. That's our understanding at this point in time.
Uh, in that case, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, establish, establishing purpose of Epic Fund four nine five zero four on first reading.
Second.
Motion made second to. Motion made second to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five on first reading. Establishing the purpose of the epic's fund forty-nine oh four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So do you wanna delay this till the next meeting or second, third, or you wanna?
Yeah, there's I don't see that you're gonna see four.
I do have a real quick question on this topic, though. Um, Mr. Rowley, is is there a strategic plan or anything that governs the direction that we're going on this project? Cause I know there's been, there's still concerns out there that we don't have the kind of coverage that we need. Um, and the funds in this fund may not be sufficient to take care of what the real need is on that. That's part of the, you know, long-term plan that I was hoping we would be working on putting together is to figure out, you know, what do we need to do to make sure that our first responders and and the public are being adequately covered by communications?
John, you want to come on up here, please, state your name and title?
John Rowley. Uh, this basically is to to secure uh high-speed wireless internet to emergency responder uh headquarters.
Hmm.
Um, not necessarily for uh two-way communications.
Hmm.
So it's uh we have still have two towers to put up. Um, the cost of that probably is somewhere between forty and sixty thousand per tower. Um, and then, of course, uh whatever ancillary uh communications could be used on that tower certainly would be welcome. But as far as facilitating an upgrade for two-way communications out of that fund, uh that that's not provided.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it may incidentally create some infrastructure that can be piggybacked upon, but it's not necessarily for that purpose.
It could uh create some avenues for for some tower placements.
Hmm.
That could facilitate uh that upgrade, yes.
Yeah. I would be very interested in in continuing the conversation about what needs to be done to make sure that we have adequate two-way communication for our folks out there. Um, I don't, you get the sense that anybody is taking responsibility for that and said, this is our our deal and we have to fix this?
No, um, had some conversations with the communication supervisor and there seems to be a a uh radio out there now that maybe could meet the needs, but they're about six or seven thousand dollars apiece.
Hmm.
Uh, and unfortunately, the longevity of those is somewhat restrictive, so I I'm not sure how long those will last.
Hmm.
But uh the last time we had a meeting with uh Emergency Radio Service, there were some spots that they had some concerns with, where uh if we could partner with uh IMSIC, that's the state organization, we could probably meet those. They seem to be uh pushing back on adding any more uh communication sites.
Hmm.
If we would wanna pay for that, they're looking at uh well over a million dollars a site.
Hmm.
Uh, and ideally, there would be at least two additional locations in the county, one up towards Bremen and one down uh around Culver. They put up a uh single transmitter on the Bass Lake Tower.
Hmm.
But unfortunately, uh if you're in Culver, law enforcement has to change the channels on the radio to access that that tower. So that's that's kind of a challenge, especially if you're investigating or really in kick by somebody or someone shooting at you or whatever.
And I do, yeah, obviously, it's not gonna be a solution. We're gonna come up with it today, but I do wanna try to figure out, um, you know, when our when our goals are gonna be on this and and to start putting something into action. Cause if the need is for two million dollars to to solve this problem, part of what we would need to understand is how big are these dead spots? You know, how 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 frequently are people running into problems in these areas? And then, yeah, what's it gonna take to fix that? Cause it's not gonna happen in one budget cycle. It's probably something we have to we have to start saving up for, so.
And I think, John, Angie, correct me, I think it's four hundred thousand dollars in that fund now, correct?
Yes.
Somewhere in that area, and I think it's just over four hundred thousand dollars, cause we just got the check for the uh we sold that lease back, you know, to the company here a few weeks ago.
Well, real quick, just to kind of go back to that. So right now, the epic money, you're kind of getting earmarked for high-speed internet? And I'm guessing.
And tower tower maintenance and and that site maintenance and that that sort of thing.
Okay, so do we need to do high-speed internet on a tower or can we go satellite?
I guess whatever it takes to get to job done.
And and the reason I ask that is I I don't know, I I was just wondering if it had to be something structural as part of the requirements for that money? Um, I'm not sure. Uh, I think we'd have to discuss that with Dr. Hall. Okay, I I I was just wondering because it trend of technology right now, whether it be Verizon, T-Mobile, Starlink, all that stuff, everything's transitioning over to satellite location for high-speed internet. As far as they're going to where I know at least T-Mobile offers some pretty decent stuff for first responders and things like that. But if we don't have to buy into obtain or maintaining and upkeep and a structure and still get the desired results, I think that is in our favor.
I think that the main focus is making sure that our emergency response facilities have high-speed wireless internet. You know, if it's uh.
Okay.
Underground or or whatever, I I think that's probably acceptable.
And I think the language in this is broad enough that you could cover both of those, so, yeah.
Man.
Okay.
Sometimes I hate asking questions that requires us more work.
I I think we wanna be thorough.
Yeah.
That's that's probably the key.
Well, ideally, we get the solution right the first time to where we don't have another problem.
Exactly.
Ten years down the line.
So do I have any more discussion or?
I don't know, that's.
Motion?
Yeah, we yeah, we passed it already.
Follow-up question, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all right.
That's that's all I'm I'm.
I apologize.
Thanks, John.
Uh, next we have, I put on the agenda here, community corrections, please, um exploration of discussion of community correction. I've asked Bo to come, Bo, you wanna come forward? Uh, as some of you know, uh, it was brought up, an opportunity for another building we could put them in, a block up the street here. Uh, you guys asked me to go check it out. I set up a uh a tour to go through it. Uh, Bo and Jesse and I went through that building last week. Uh, and then the next day, three council members went through it.
Hmm.
Uh, it is the building at three seventeen West Grant, excuse me, West Grant, three seventeen West Jefferson. Uh, it's rock up here on the corner, southwest corner of uh Plum and uh Jefferson. And Bo's got just a few weeks to determine if he's resigning the lease or moving out. I believe your lease is about two hundred thousand dollars for five years. Is that they're requesting from you?
Yeah, I'm I'm looking at, um, my my lease is over in December. And to re-up my lease, currently I pay twenty-seven thousand dollars a year for rent. Um, that that is looking to increase to close to forty.
Hmm.
Uh, on a five-year lease, so lock me into that, the the resource center for for five more years. Um, it's always been something that, you know, my advisory board and community corrections is is sought is a is a a place that's adequate, where we can save that that money for rent and, you know, apply it to our needs so that, you know, it's it. It increases the life of my budget and and keeps it off of the county, cause currently I spend, I mean, my budget, combined grant and my PI fund, almost nine hundred thousand dollars. I don't take any money from the county. And the the goal is to keep it that way for as long as possible. So uh to what you had mentioned, yes, we went and looked at the building. I think the building is adequate. Um, for our needs, has classroom, has offices, um, has everything that we need. Um, and it'd be great to have my own space.
And to add on that, uh, in talking with Bowen Center, they own the building presently, uh, they want out. Uh, actually, he tried to sell me that building a year ago when we bought the other one. And I told him, no, we weren't looking to expand government at that time. Uh, but uh we talked to him. He is gonna be taking it to his board Wednesday for final approval. He feels that will happen. And you know, the purchase price we're intending to offer is fifty thousand dollars for this building. And it's we're all, you know, we're all appraising for that. And talking with Sean, I don't believe we have to have an appraisal because of the fifty thousand dollar price tag, Sean, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it it it's got an assessment on the tax records, they're at hundred twenty-seven five. And that doesn't take into consideration of the uh the frontage, you know, the value there in the frontage. But uh, we're looking at a fifty thousand. Uh, the downside to the building is it is gonna need a roof in a couple of years. Uh, maintenance will take care of that. Uh, but I think we're looking at about eighty thousand dollars plus utilities. We're probably talking ninety, ninety-five thousand dollars over the next five years compared to two hundred thousand dollars in rent.
Hmm.
So to me, it seems like a no-brainer. But uh, I guess today we need to, we should choose to move forward. We would approve it today, pending council approval. I think that will happen the next meeting. We'd have to get appropriation put on here. The council's gonna pay the uh for the building. And uh Bo will take care of the utilities and then we will, maintenance will take care of the uh roof and some things that need to be done to it. And then Bo's gonna take care of whatever they do on the inside and trying to make sure they maintain the handicap accessibility for the building.
Okay.
So did I forget anything, Bo?
Nope, that's it. So so basically what we're gonna do, um, if the council approves it is, currently, we have not been supporting community corrections from the general fund or any other commu- uh county funds. They've been one hundred percent supporting themselves.
Right.
Um, we're going to give them a runtime gift of fifty thousand dollars, basically, right? And the benefit of that is it will alleviate them with the long-term cost of of paying rent. So they'll get to save roughly forty thousand dollars a year going forward.
Thirty net.
Yeah, thirty. Um, and so I we'll we'll have a big long-term win on this, and it's gonna help us continue to do community corrections, which have you guys ever done an estimate on how much you save in incarceration costs?
A lot.
Because it's, yeah, it's got to be a lot. Yeah, I I mean, it it's from keeping people, and it also stays on the state too, because we keep people out of prison. So prison population's low, community safe, um, all these individuals that are, you know, jail exists for a reason. There are certain people that need to be in there.
Hmm.
Um, but some people can be out with their families, be productive members of the society. Uh, and that's that's our clientele.
Hmm.
Um, I mean, my, I think my budget speaks for itself. It's a almost a million dollars that I'm saving the county every year.
Hmm.
Um.
I think it would be more than that if we were paying to house these people.
Yeah, what was the jail expansion?
Uh, fifty million dollars.
Eighty million, but over twenty years to house and feed them and everything.
Yeah, okay.
About eighty million plus over twenty years.
So we're we're doing okay, yeah. I would I would say a huge amount of that savings on the jail expansion is what you guys are doing. There were some other things that fed into that, but you guys are a very big part of that, so, yeah.
And also, I would say if we if we don't help them become more uh self-sufficient, which that's what we're doing, uh, they will be back on the council's doorstep in a few years, cause their funding will not support. It's it's not increasing.
Yeah.
And we know the state's cutting here and cutting there, so this is a way to help them.
Hmm.
Uh, remain self-sufficient as long as possible, like I said.
I I got a quick question maybe for you both. Has the state ever explained why they're cutting support for programs like yours? Have they gave any justification for why they're doing it? Cause obviously, it can be effective.
Well, they haven't. So my program specifically, they have not cut.
Okay.
But they also have not increased.
Hmm.
So there were there were cut, there were programs that were cut. Uh, the original design of the grant was to keep people, what was community corrections. Uh, it it home detention specifically. So now we've seen some cuts to other community supervision programs, drug court, um, felony diversion. Um, but, you know, they've kept the, basically with the new state budget that was adopted, they just didn't have enough money to s- support all of those programs or as much as they wanted. So they went back to the original intent of the grant, which is to support home detention programs. And keep those people out of prison, so, and keep jails from being overcrowded. So, yeah, so the, I mean, I haven't seen it cut, but I but I also haven't, you know, we've we've received three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars for, uh, it's been sev- it's been a decade.
Hmm. So basically, no, basically no inflation or or no increase in money to account for inflation during that time, so.
Yeah, all of the increases in my my rent going up.
Yeah.
Wages going up every year, insurance costs, per, you know, I cover all of that stuff. So.
And the county will put this building under insurance plan, Mike, so let's keep that in mind. County will put this building, cover the insurance form on our on our county-wide plan. Uh, also, the reason it's here this morning for approval, uh, we would have to come back and approve the agreement once it's drawn up. I think, Sean, we could probably use it as a template of the last agreement and just change some things around a little bit and move forward with that, do you think?
Yeah, I think they're, I think the council has to adopt a resolution or something to, yeah.
And and but he has ninety days, he has ninety days before end of your lease if you wanna get out of it.
Correct.
So that's coming up real quick. So I think what we do now today, if we approve this, move forward, then we contact the council.
Hmm.
And get their approval, cause Wednesday night, Thursday morning, we're gonna know that Boens accepting or not.
Yeah.
So that's kind of, this is still kind of temporary, but I I I feel based on what uh Jay has told me, he's talked to some of his board members in private, he thinks they're gonna they'll they'll support it. So, did I forget anything, Bo? That way Bo could know for certainty, he'd go ahead and cut his lease off, cause he only got two weeks, something like that.
Yeah, I mean, the the building managers at the Community Resource Building, they've been really great to work with. Um, it's just, you know, having having the ability to to make my budget last as long as possible. So I I wanna treat them the right way, too.
Sure, sure. So that's why, so that's why we're hurrying up, trying to do this, so he can do this with certainty.
Yeah, so basically, we're looking for a motion to uh empower the president to negotiate a building purchase with uh Bowen and then to take that proposal to the council?
Yes, for the amount of fifty thousand dollars. So sure you get that in there.
For the amount of fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
I'm, that that is my motion.
Second. And then the final agreement, we'll come back to this board for approval, okay? Motion made second, move forward, empower the present board to negotiate with Bowen Health to purchase uh building at three seventeen, right, West Jefferson?
Corner of Plamen.
Plamen.
In Lincoln Way.
For that amount of fifty thousand dollars with the president and board, you know, negotiating the agreement, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Bo.
Thank you.
What you do for us.
Okay, you have anything else?
I'd send you agenda items.
There were two things that we brought up earlier in the year that I I would like to uh start moving forward a little bit on. And it's it's the first time that I've ever done anything like this, so I don't know what the the proper process is. We had talked about um creating a conflict of interest uh ordinance, um, talking about uh training for uh ourselves and then any appointees that we might have to uh to boards and would also outline the standards of recusal. And then we also talked about a uh financial transparency ordinance for any non-governmental organizations receiving county funds. And so, um, would that be something that we can work on together, Mr. Cerise? Maybe uh bounce that off the uh the council as well, cause we would probably wanna have them uh join us on both of these.
Sure.
So I'm just asking permission from the board to to work with Mr. Cerise for the development of these ordinances.
And I do know, as far as the first one you talked about, clearly, county has one already.
Hmm.
Okay.
I I I know I've talked to a a board member up there and they do have one now, so. Yeah, is that your motion?
That's my motion. I'm asking for for permission to work on those on those two ordinances.
Second. Motion made second to allow Commissioner Byhand to work with Attorney Cerise on creating a conflict of interest uh policy for the county, for elected officials, and also a financial transparency for nonprofits that take money from the county. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion. Opposed, motion carries. Anything else?
That's all I got.
Um, you have something?
I gotta kinda keep a track record going, don't I?
I guess I, this is my list, so you have something?
No, I'm just gonna kind of, I don't know, keep it a little bit lighter, whatnot, but. Seems like the last couple weeks, just in general, what's going on with the nation, even here locally, just kind of been heavy.
Yeah.
Um, we had the incident with the uh lady up in Bremen, which. Me and Jesse both both knew, that's kind of a tragic event. Stuff going on in North Carolina, of course, what happened last week with uh Charlie Kirk. I I wanna say thank you to the people of our county for maintaining common decency. I didn't see any, you hop online, hop on Facebook, you scroll through. You c- some of the stuff you read, some of the stuff you see coming out of people, you it can't be really fathom it. How nasty some people can be over certain things, and I wanna thank the people of the county for not being like that. O- overall, we've maintained a pretty decent county, we've got some pretty good people living here, and I appreciate that, I wanna say thank you to everyone. That's it?
That's it. That being said, I would have to kind of echo your sentiments, uh, it's it's nice, and basically, even during our meetings, people have been respectful. And I know it has only been the case in the past, so, thank you all, uh, with that, I'm gonna entertain the motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Motion made second, adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and we are adjourned.